Hi Carrie.
Hello.
What's going on Chuck?
Hey Nate, how you doing?
I'm doing alright, you?
You're good. Life's a little hectic right now. I'm going back and forth Vermont and Truittsbury.
I see.
This is my first Zoom meeting out of Vermont. I'm in Vermont right now. I was in Truittsbury just a few days ago. I go back and forth every nine days or so. It's a lot of driving, but you know. One day at a time. How are you? Everything good?
Yeah, we're in Vermont here.
I'm in Shelburne, Vermont. That's just a little bit outside of Burlington.
Oh, so that's way up there.
Yeah, it's a solid three hour drive if I drive straight. Three and a half hours if I stop a couple of times and stretch my legs, etc.
Yeah.
It's nice here though. It's very nice. I have two offices in this townhouse. And I look out one window and I see camel's hump. It's like, you know, four or five thousand feet high. It's beautiful. Then I looked the other way. And I see the Adirondacks across Lake Champlain. It's pretty beautiful. It's really nice. It's a little cold up here, but.
Yeah, camel's hump is a wonderful.
You been there?
Yeah, I've biked out a couple of times, yeah.
Yeah.
It's great.
And yeah, it's starting next year, not in 2023, but in 2024. I'll probably spend a solid month or so in a warm climate. You know, during this time of the year, you know, Florida, Southwest California, and then maybe another month in Italy. And so that'll just, you know, that'll, it's only those four months, January 1st to May 1st that I. You know, I could definitely not be here half that time and be happy. Just for the cold, you know. If I can break it up, I'll be in good shape, I think.
Most excellent.
Are you from Massachusetts originally Nate?
Uh, yeah, I grew up here. I was born in California, but.
Oh, we're in California. I lived there for two years.
I was born in San Francisco.
Yeah, I lived there for my first year practicing law. I was right there, San Francisco, seventy-seven and seventy-eight. For about a year when I was a kid.
We're almost there at the same time. I was born in nineteen eighty-three.
Oh wow. And I was the first grader in Los Angeles, way before that, in the fifties.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm seventy years old now. So I graduated law school forty-five years ago.
Yeah.
But I'm licensed up here too in the federal courts. So. I've actually been in a bunch of cases up here.
Yeah, I did live in San Diego for a few years.
Yeah, that's sweet. San Francisco's sweet. San Francisco's my favorite city in the United States. What part of San Francisco do you live in?
No, I live, I mean. I, uh, my parents lived in Oakland.
Oh, in Oakland, across the bay.
I was born in UCSF.
Yeah, okay, nice, nice.
And then I lived in San Diego.
Yeah, San Diego's very sweet. I like them both.
You know, I mean, it's got its pros and cons.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Let's see, we, uh, our chair is here.
Yeah, hey Deacon, how you doing? How are you Deacon? I don't think I hear you. I think you have to unmute yourself.
I think so. I've managed to.
Ah, there you are. Now I hear you.
Yeah, great, great. No, I've been pretty good, except I twisted my knee just before Christmas and.
Oh, I'm sorry, out in the woods?
No, I was walking back from my stepdaughter's house.
Oh.
On the ice, you know?
Oh no, sorry about that.
Yeah, it was a bummer.
Oh, still hurting you right now?
Little, yeah. It was my bad knee anyway, so.
You have surgery on that knee?
Yeah, I did have surgery on that one in sixteen or seventeen.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's Jeff Weston, my neighbor. Hey Jeff. How are you Jeff?
Yeah, you're muted.
I can't hear you Jeff. I see Carrie's still here. I see her name up on the board.
Hello.
Hi Carrie, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, very good. Hey Maren.
Hi Chuck.
Nice to see you.
There's nothing now Jeff, you're unmuted. Yeah, I see it's still having the trouble.
Yeah.
Well, he dropped off. He's coming back in there.
Well, we're not a quorum yet. When are you a quorum? How many? Five? Uh, four for regular business and higher for special permit.
Um, can anyone hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you. Hi Charles, how are you?
Very good. You can call me Chuck like you always do, but it's alright.
Good to see you again.
You too.
Thank you.
How's everything on Kettle Hill Road?
Kettle Hill Road is the same as it's been for a long time. Things are quiet and good.
Yep.
And how are you? I haven't seen you walking.
Well, I walk there sometimes. I'm going back and forth quite a lot these days.
I see.
You know, so I'm here now, but I was there a few days ago. Every nine days or so I'm back.
Right, right.
Three or four days, yeah.
And can I ask, how was your new place in Vermont?
It's very nice, but I tell you, it's a beautiful subdivision, beautiful, state of the art, but. We closed on December the ninth. It should have been February ninth. We have been in a construction zone fifteen days, you know. Hi Carrie, are you all set?
Yes, I am.
We have a quorum now.
Excellent, wonderful. Oh, there's Jeff. We need Jeff to.
And Michael too, so. Let, why don't we get started? I note that Scott Phillips has joined us. He wrote a letter offering his expertise to the board and he has come. Do we have? Do we have public comment? Yeah, of course. I still want continued guidance. As you know, I did submit my proposed plan to both yourself and to Jeff Lacy. Jeff Lacy was designated as liaison at the last meeting, so I'd like to just go over it before I finalize it, just to make sure.
Yeah, yeah. I would hope that we could do this very quickly Chuck.
Less than five minutes would be best for me.
Absolutely, for us too. Good.
And I had a public comment question.
Well, let's get, if we can do Chuck in this five, that'd be great.
Okay, so him done. If I can ask Jeff Lacy to put it on the board, if you could Jeff, my, uh, my plan. Basically, while he's getting that ready.
I don't have it right handy to put on anything.
Alright.
Anybody else have it? I mean, I probably have it, but I have to go dig for it Chuck.
Why, you want to go to Maren first while you're digging for it? Jeff, it's the one that you just got sent. I don't have that one. Yeah, I sent it to Jeff Lacy and to Deacon.
Yeah.
And what it is, is pretty much what I said it was going to be. And I'll just, you know.
Chuck, what day did you send it?
Oh, I sent it to you when I got it about two weeks ago.
Oh my, okay, so now we gotta go flying back.
On May, yeah, two weeks ago.
Chuck, can't you just get it up on the screen?
Yeah, I don't.
And share it. I mean, you have it, right? You should be able to share it.
Well, I. I don't think I can do that without, I mean, I can try. Let me see if I can go into my emails. I don't know.
But why don't we, why don't we try?
Don't you just have it in your file?
Yeah, well, I have to go find it, but certainly don't know how to share it, even if I do find it.
Oh, we'll help you with that.
Okay, hold on.
Why don't, why don't we do this and move on and deal with Miriam?
Okay, I did find, I do have it, but I. I opened it up. Now what do I do with it? It's on my screen. What do I do Jeff?
Alright, so you're on Zoom, let's see.
Share screen at the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, listen to Steve is what you do.
Okay, where do I go Steve?
You see that, you see the share screen icon at the bottom of the Zoom page?
Um, let me go back to the Zoom page. Okay, here it is, share screen. Yep, here it is, great. Desktop, share.
Uh, you want to share that particular document, not your whole desktop. So just open that document.
Um, well.
So just look. We're gone there and select that one.
Which one?
Well, look at whatever pops up and go to your plan and click on that.
I assume, I put it on the desktop, so maybe that's, can I just?
Click on that, click on that.
Alright, I'll click on the desktop and I'll click on share and see what happens. Allows them to share your screen. Let's see what that goes.
Uh, who, Carrie's got her hand up, but who's running the meeting that can make sure that they can share, that Chuck can share the screen?
I'm hosting and he is the co-host, so he should be able to. I think you can't even see the share screen button. If you're not a co-host, so since he's able to see it, he should be able to.
Okay, see share screen. Let me go back there now. I'm gonna go. But I'm just gonna go back to my email.
Chuck, if it's easier, if you can email me that file, I can do it.
Okay, great. Let me do that right now. Hold on.
Okay, I was gonna suggest to email it to Mr. Jeff, but okay.
I'm trying to find it. As we speak, I'm trying to find it.
It's December twenty-first, I think. So there, again, there it is, but let me see if I can. Let me see, go back in here, go back to my inbox. Okay, I'm gonna share, I'm gonna forward it. To Jeff. Lacy. Carrie, what email?
Planning Board, LUC.
Planning. Board. The LUC?
Yep, truittsbury.org.
LUC app.
Truittsbury.org.
There it is, okay. I'm just gonna send this, send it to Deacon too. Okay. Alright, I'm going to, uh. I'm gonna forward this. Think I'm gonna forward this. No, let's reply. Send, okay, here it is. Here it comes. All three, all three of you are getting it. It's, uh. It's a. It's an email with an attachment from a guy named Brian C. Flantovich. Partner of Northeast Survey Consultants. You got it yet?
Yeah, I see, I'm downloading it.
You got it? Okay, I'm gonna get out of this since you guys have it, unless you want me to keep it here.
Can everyone see it?
Yep, there it is.
There we go.
Well, let me, let me go over this quickly, alright? See, what I'm pointing to right here is my house in Truittsbury, right? And it's, it was in the last plan I filed with this board and actually with the Franklin County Registry of Deeds, but I got A and R approval from this board. This, this house is a two acre, slightly more than a two acre building lot, but there's this other, one of the conditions of the special permit was to. Merge these two lots either with here or with here. So this lot. Proposed Lot A will be merged, so this is gonna become a three acre, a little bit more than a three acre building lot, okay? And I, my wife and I now own this lot. My daughter did own the lot, so we're gonna put the, you know, who really owns it right now, that's Lot A. Again, it's gonna become a three acre lot with the house. Lot B will stay exactly the same way with my daughter's name still on it. You know, of course, it could be sold. In the next month or so, who knows? Lot two, right here, this whole area, this is two point seven acres. You know, notice an easement right here. To get to this back conservation area, eleven acre mountain. This is a building lot, that was, was in the last plan called proposed building lot, and now we're just calling it Lot Two. And it's by A and R approval, which is what the special permit that this board granted demands and requires, so that's why. I'm coming for A and R approval. Lot three, right here, was owned by my wife and I. Now it's owned by Kathleen Lugash, that's right here. So that's the changes. That's gonna say, you see Kathleen Lugash there. Lot two is gonna be owned by Joan and I, not as a proposed law, but as a lot. Lot A is gonna be part of. Our present building lot, which is three acre. Lot B will stay the same with Jenna's name. So that's it. That's what I talked about, and that's what I emailed you all about, or some of you about. And so that's it. That's it. I want to come back at some point. The conservation area two staying in the same. Conservation area one, which is down here, which is about three, slightly less than three acres, two point nine acres. This one here is a little bit more than eleven acres. They're all staying in the same. And. The idea is, if you, unless you have any change you want to make on this, I will. Pay the necessary fee to the town clerk. I will provide her with my law and probably nine copies of this. Yeah, I'll do that in the next few weeks. And. You know, I don't know what the mechanism after that is, Deacon or Jeff.
Be in touch with me. After you get it, after you get it surveyed, be in touch with me and we'll put you on the next agenda, the next agenda that you can make. You mean after I file? It's already been surveyed. Okay. Alright, Jeff, did you have something?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. So Lot. The lot with your house on it. I have my cursor moving around. Could people see it?
No.
That's mine. Mine's pointed on the house right now. Yeah, okay. I see yours Jeff.
Okay, I see it.
You see my cursor? It's right on your house.
So since I'm sharing this, you can only see my cursor and I'm assuming it's.
On the house.
Alright, well, can somebody give me the?
Keep doing it Carrie.
Since I'm sharing on my computer, the only cursor that can be seen is mine. I can't give anyone else's permission.
I think you want to put it on Lot One.
Alright.
Lot One Jeff, you keep, yeah, Lot One, that's it.
Lot One has your house on it.
Correct.
Okay, now Lot A and Lot B.
Correct.
Those are not building lots, is that correct?
No, they are not conservation lots. They are not building lots, that is correct. However, the special permit. That you granted, I think, two thousand sixteen.
There was a site plan review.
Huh?
There was a site plan review.
Correct. That one required, that site plan review required as a condition that Lot A. Be conveyed in whole or in part to the owners of Lot One. And that Lot B be conveyed in whole or in part to either to the owners of Lot One. Or the owners of Lot Two, and that will happen in the future when we figure out. Who the owners of Lot One are and or who the owners of Lot Two are, but we don't know that yet. That's. Probably not until the next several months will that be determined.
Okay, so the only, the only lot that we have there that remains is a building lot is Lot Two.
Correct. That is correct. Obviously, my Lot One is a building lot, there's a house on it, and Lot Three obviously is a building lot, but there's a house on it. So the only one without a house on it. Is Lot Two, that's correct.
So that's the only lot that has development potential is Lot Two.
Correct.
You know, possibly with the addition of Lot B onto it.
Exactly.
Okay, alright, yep, I got it.
Are there any other questions? If there are not, I would like to take this exact plan. Ask my surveyors to make it into a my law, ask them for nine copies. I understand you only need three copies. You want the my law and another three copies. And I will take the rest, one for, that I will keep others, I will, you know, if someone buys my house. Or buys Lot Two. Fair chance whoever buys my house will buy it all, because it's all on the market together. I'll give them a couple of copies too. Obviously, my real estate agents want a copy of this too. So that's it. I'm gonna do that. And if that's okay, and as soon as I do it, this cost me five hundred bucks, by the way, and if that's right, there's another change, it's another five hundred bucks. And it's gonna cost me seventy dollars as I understand it. And to, that I have to give the town clerk. So.
My, my understanding would be if you're changing it, you, you, don't you have to come back as an A and R?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm gonna do.
But you have to come back to us.
Correct. That's what, but that's what I'm doing now. I'm telling you that this is gonna be the proposed A and R.
Yeah.
This right here. And I didn't want to just give it to you because I had some fear, not much of a fear, that you might say, oh no, change that, change that, you know. I mean, this is what. Really, what we agreed would happen anyway, and it's all in the documents that's on file in the registry of deeds and the. Site plan review and the special permits, you know, you need to have a common driver, we need to have easements, all of that. You know, the merging of all these lots, all of that. So I just didn't want to do it officially, you know, make my laws and copies. You know, if you, I want to know you're gonna approve this. That's, I mean, I know.
So Chuck, you're not changing any lines, you're just changing notation.
Yeah, the only lines, you know, the, you'll still see that, for example, Lot A, Lot A right here. It still has that line, but I, but once. You know, once the house is sold, and this likely, all of this here, let's say they just buy the house. Someone buys the house, it'll be conveyed as a three acre lot, and I'll cite this plan in the deed. This, this new plan that's, that won't be probably recorded until February. Will be cited in the deed as a three acre lot with the house.
So no new lots are being created here?
Correct.
Okay.
Except for the proposed is going, it's going from, the old. Plan that I showed you last time, that I have right here in my hand, it said the word proposed.
For Lot Two, okay. So, so, so that's going from. Sort of a lot that's shown on a site plan review to a lot that is. Is buildable because we're A and R-ing it.
Exactly.
Alright.
Once you do, once you do the A and R, which I expect probably won't happen, given the logistics until February, but.
Okay, so seventy bucks for that, right?
Okay, so I am gonna give a check to seventy dollars. I'm gonna fill out Form A. I'm gonna cite the old. The old A and R that I have in my hand right here. I'm gonna cite that, and I'm gonna say, in the notations, this is updating that. Plan, that A and R that was previously approved by this board, and that this is the updated A and R showing proper ownership and proper labels.
Yep.
That's all I'm gonna do. Give her seventy dollars, the my law, nine copies. And I don't know what happens logistically with that. Does she give them to you Deacon, and you take them around? I mean, how does, how to?
What we have been doing in our virtual reality is. You turn the stuff in. We review it at a virtual meeting. The day after the virtual meeting, I go sign the paperwork and. And give the stuff that's being returned to you, to the clerk, to the town clerk.
Okay. Alright, and does everybody, I assume all of you that sign it too, I mean that.
No, I have authorization to sign on behalf of the board.
Oh, okay, that's even better, okay. That's even better, okay. Fantastic. Alright, I'm done. Deacon, I'll let you know. Jeff, I'll let you know when I have the draft Form A prepared. When I have the check ready, when I have the my law in my possession and all the copies, I will let Jeff and Deacon know. That I'm about to file it, and I assume we won't have, you won't see me probably until February.
But you can't file it till after we meet.
I'm sorry?
You can't file it till after we meet and I sign the stuff.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, I know that, but, but.
Okay, okay.
I know that, but you have to, we have to, right, right. But I'm asking you. What are the, your two meeting dates in February, if you have any, or should we just talk about that later on? You have any February dates set up?
No, with that, the default date is the second Monday. We sometimes change it.
Okay, alright, I'm just gonna do the best I can to get it done at least by the second Monday, okay? Thank you, everybody. I'm sorry if I took one five minutes, I probably did. Yep, of course I did.
You got it all Chuck.
Alright, take care everybody. Nice to see you, Truittsbury. I'm still one of you. Thank you. Bye bye.
Hi, hi, hi. So I sent an email to the planning board and I thought I would just make myself available to explain it. And also, since the ConCom's meeting tomorrow night and I'm gonna be reporting on that topic. You know, if there's any feedback from the planning board, I wanted to be able to share. We're not gonna be meeting again in January, so. You know, if there is any more information the planning board needs from the ConCom. It would be good for me to know that.
Are you gonna stay for the whole meeting, Miriam?
Uh, probably not.
Okay, because we're visited also by Scott Phillips, and I was hoping to. To have some, we could have some conversation with him too. And I don't know how much of all this.
About chapter ninety-one licenses?
Well, I mean, you have, you're bringing us this topic, which is, which we need to, which we need to discuss. And Scott Phillips has been in touch with us about the solar stuff. We have to, we have to start the hearing at seven thirty.
Okay.
So I'm not sure how to portion out the time.
Yeah, I can just stay in the background and pop in when you can get to it later.
Okay, okay, so we'll do you after the hearing.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great.
Jeff, did you want to say something? It sounded like you were gonna say something.
I'm not aware of a role for us in that process. And perhaps the building inspector, if it's a. But. I don't see us having any permitting role there.
Well, they put a notice in the newspaper saying they were submitting a permit application to the planning board. Carrie, you wanna?
Yeah, I sent these documents because they were received. Yeah, I sent these documents because they were received on Thursday when I came in, and I sent them to Planning Board and ComCom. Uh, there wasn't any actual substantive application, there was no fee. It didn't say what application it was applying for besides in chapter ninety-one license, but there really wasn't much direction.
Right.
So I sent what I received.
We have no.
When I read the materials, I thought that they were offering us the opportunity to to make comment to them. And and use the word may rather than shall.
So we should discuss this after the hearing, since we're already doing it anyway, if we just.
Yeah, I think we should. I mean, let's say, I think we should, I think we should take the time to do this, and let's let's talk to, let's talk to Mr. Phillips right now, so that, because I he had the, he had he's offered us his services and um, or expertise, and I think we should talk to him and also and we only have a few minutes.
Hi, everybody. Uh, thanks for the the lead in. I'll try to be brief. My name is Scott Phillips. My wife and I live on Leonard Road in the tiny house that was recently built. Uh, I've been an electrical engineer in the renewable energy market for about the past twenty years, and it turns out that for the last eight years, I've been working with battery energy storage systems. And I see in the vote coming up on the nineteenth, Article Three, that we're trying to include the language for E S S into one of the definitions, and it occurred to me, hey, I should probably reach out to everyone in this group and just let you know, I live here. So if you have any questions about battery energy storage systems, I'm your guy. Um, I I don't know if you have any questions, but if you do, please reach out to me.
I do.
Okay.
I I have one too. Go, Jeff.
Do you have any problems, issues, or anything else with the um the E S S aspect of the solar bylaw revision that's coming up for special town meeting next week?
Uh, do I have any issues with it? No, uh, I think that just in general, the world ought to have more solar, more batteries as much as humanly possible, and that's not just because my company does energy storage. I think philosophically, they're great ideas. Um, also, as a brand new homeowner here in the woods, I really appreciate trees and forests and try to conserve all that that I possibly can, so I recognize that there's a balance. Um, that brings up other follow-on questions, but you know, philosophically, I'm all in favor. If you want me to look over details and make comments, happy to. If you want me to read over contracts to look for loopholes or gaps or something that you might get stuck with, that's exactly what I do in my company.
Okay, I I was just trying to ascertain whether your interest derived from um, problems that you had with what we are taking to town meeting, or or simply a desire to help us when we get these applications in the future.
Simply a desire to help you, that that is a hundred percent what I'm trying to do. I do have like personal questions about the solar applications that are coming, but I, as soon as we're ready to get into those, I certainly can. But just starting with battery energy storage systems, by all means, lean on me if I can help at all. I'll gladly teach.
Okay, great. Yeah, so I guess, given that, I don't have a question so much as a comment, Scott. Uh, I guess I would first say thank you for offering. Um, you know, this this town, I don't know where you were coming from before, but this town, like lots of little towns, runs on volunteer people power, so.
Sure.
Uh, the expertise is always beneficial and help and appreciated. Um, I think for context, you know, right now, we don't have any new special permits, but um, you know, if you're operating in the space, you probably know that the state subsidy program, the SMART program, now requires battery storage on all um, solar installations that are getting a smart subsidy. So if we get anything, um, that's gonna be case. The one solar installation that we have, um, after that was approved, I think it was two or three years after, came forward and asked for uh, approval as a special permit for, a separate special permit for battery storage, but that's the only one that has happened to date, but we expect if anything comes forward as a new special permit for solar, um, we will be dealing with battery energy storage questions and issues because it'll be part of the application, so um, the expertise is would be appreciated.
Happy to. And I think that's my three minutes.
Well, we still have four minutes before we can start the hearing.
Okay, uh, I I can easily burn those four minutes with my solar application questions, um. Uh, just a real briefly one, and again, I I've been too busy to actually keep up with the details of what's going on. Is it true in AMP Energy's solar proposals that they are offering uh, the town of Shrewsbury money to keep their solar panels clear of snow during the winter? Is that is that a the accurate or inaccurate understanding?
Well, I guess what I would say to just jump in is nothing's come forward to us, so there is no application. Um, so there's lots of background talk about what's being thought of, what's being considered, but officially, there's you know, if you ask the planning board, which you are, what do the applications say? We would say nothing because there are no applications.
Perfect, okay. Well, well, then then as part of the the conversations that are floating around in the air, I'd like to raise only two concerns. And these are by no means showstoppers. They're just, hey, by the ways, um, if in my experience, if a company is offering us money to go do work for them, and then I look at the fine print and see what that work is, and is like, oh, crud, they're offering us to like, you guys keep our solar panels clear, and we're gonna offer you this much money to go accomplish that. I immediately think that they know stuff that I don't know, so I'd be super leery about saying yes to that. That's not automatically saying that it's a bad idea, but just I'm super nervous about signing up for something that we have no expertise on. They do, and they're offering for us to do it.
So can I, I'll just jump in again, I'm sorry to monopolize guys. Um, so in that particular instance, so there's about eighteen months ago, there was a discussion between AMP and the town. The select board is the the body in town that signs contracts, and so my understanding would be even if a pitch like that came forward, it would be for the select board to take on that question, because it's really about um, the town taking on a commitment for services and and return for some kind of remuneration, uh, which would be set, which would be set from the planning board, which is really looking at, you know, the citing and the zoning part, but um, you know, I appreciate the the comments, you just, you know, in terms of where you direct it, when it actually becomes a thing, it's probably the select board.
I I appreciate that feedback. The the second part might actually become part of this group, though, which is the second part is um, I know that there's a big question about are what is it more valuable to knock down trees if you're, you know, replacing them with solar panels? And I I can share that I can't put my finger on the report, but I do remember about two years ago seeing a report that said, oh, yeah, they they pay their carbon footprint in like three years. So it's generally a carbon positive if we are knocking down trees and putting in solar panels. But more interesting to me after that is uh, again, since they're not, there are no permits in front of the board, there's there's nothing to answer, but maybe we could like ask AMP Energy if they're, what is the ground treatment going to be like? Are they planning on uh, top servicing with sand or gravel or grass? Because my very first thought is you could really increase the usability of that land if you seeded the ground with native pollinator attractors. And that might really make things a lot easier to to get approval on. Yes, you're knocking down trees, but you're putting in a whole field of flowers for the bees.
So I I just keep on monopolizing since.
Sure.
So in terms of working backwards, pollinators, um, I think the Shrewsbury Planning Board was ahead of it, ahead of the curve in requiring pollinators, meadows to be developed in the current one. I think I would say as a committee, we've been underwhelmed with the short-term results of that. Um, maybe in the long term, it might bear fruit, so to speak, but um, it has not yielded in the, and since it got put in uh, the expectations of the of the board. Um, but where that's something that we did require before um, it became a thing that everyone wants to do. Um, and then in terms of the the carbon stuff, I would just say without taking a position on it, there's different reports that did different things. Um, AMP has cited that, but uh, it's definitely a debatable issue as far as I could tell from seeing different materials.
Okay, well, those are my two solar questions and my offer to help on battery systems. That's everything. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. This is, this is good timing. We're, um, I'll let me, um, I'll call, I'll call the the public hearing to order. Um, we're here tonight to, uh, to have a public hearing on Mark Whitman's special permit application for an open space design plan for lot H one five one on Leverett Road. Um, I I see that, uh, Mark Stadnicki, Mark Whitman's engineer is here. I did not see, I did not see Mark Whitman on the screen. Um, so Mark Stadnicki, why don't, why don't you say a few words about about the, about your proposal?
Mark Whitman is proposing to um, create a open space design single-family residence at um, lot H one five one off of Leverett Road. Um, is it possible for me to share my screen?
I wish you would.
Okay. Uh, share. There we go. Um, can everybody see this?
Yeah, I see it.
Um, this is the open space existing conditions plan. Um, as you can see, we filled out the open space design worksheet. Um, at line ten, it came out to like two point eight eight originally.
Can you make it a little bit, can you uh, make make it a little bit larger so we can see it more clearly?
Yep.
And and can you also orient people as to where the road is and um?
Yeah, so north is um, this direction, so Leverett Road. Um, Town Hall is in this direction here. Um, if I go back to the cover sheet, I can show you better. Um, it's a large file, so it takes a while. Um, this is the fire department um, north. Uh, this is the proposed property. It's a flag lot, so that's the. Um, Mark Whitman is proposing to do an open space design to create a single-family building lot on it. Um, he had the wetlands on the property surveyed, but delineated, surveyed and approved by the Conservation Commission. That approval was sent in with the open space design special permit package. Um, the property resides in two districts, the town center and Forest District. Um, yeah, town center and Forest District. As you can see, we, um, worked on the open space design worksheet. Uh, number line ten is the number of dwelling units. Previously, we went in front of the board with a three lot subdivision, since we rounded up. Um, you can't do that, so we rounded down to he's not proposing to do two lots, it's just gonna be a single-family lot. Um, lot or line sixteen gives you the amount of boatable area on the property that came out to three point nine nine. We're proposing that the develop a lot, developable area, um, which on this plan is lot A is three point nine seven acres, and the remaining land will be an open space conservation restriction or conservation restriction easement. Um, I'm not sure if um, Mr. Whitman has determined which way he wanted to go with that. Um, the rest of the plan just shows in a like a design that would meet the zoning requirements. I can't. Had buttons in front of those.
I I can't see on the plan, but can you tell us how long that drive is?
The drive is approximately eight hundred and twenty feet. And there's a proposed emergency vehicle turnaround at the end, which connects to an existing um, wood access road that is deeded to WD Coles. Um, I can go back to the existing conditions plan and explain what's happening on the existing lot. Um, currently there's a eight foot, approximately eight foot wide wood access road that comes off of Leverett Road. Um, and goes all the way through the property to um, Coles land behind or to the north of Whitman's property. That is a deeded access. It's not a specific access or the deed easement is not specific, and Mr. Whitman isn't sure exactly which point that access is deeded for. So it may be this road, it may not be.
So they have a right of way to access that pro- their property in the back through this property?
They have a deeded, yes, there's a deeded right of way. Um, it's just stated that they have a access through the property. It doesn't specifically state, if I remember correctly, where that access is. Mr. Whitman believes that it might be on the eastern side of the property. Um, or further west, but he doesn't know if it's the existing wood access road. Um, that's the actual deeded easement. Um, he had Coles on site and discussed with them, and they weren't sure either. Um, either way, if the access will be the proposed design on the plan still allows them to have access over the driveway and to the existing wood road. Um, the exist- or proposed driveway meets the zoning requirements with the um, setback off of the property lines. This will require um, existing wood area to be removed and cut down, and existing stone walls to be removed. Uh, overall, this plans, like the proposed house is just a temporary filling. Um, whoever buys the property, or if Mr. Whitman decides to build on the property, he will have to go through and get building permits for the uh, single-family home that he decides to build. Um, there's multiple protests that have happened on the property. Um, so the lot can be onsite waste disposal for sewage. Um, and that's pretty much a rundown of what it is. The the one thing that I did want to discuss is in the previous meeting uh, that we had, there was concern about the conservation restriction draft form that was sent in with the permit application. Um, that's just a typical of what S V E has previously done on an open space type of design, where um, land was going to be reserved for open space and conservation. Re-reading through the bylaws, it's up to the planning board whether or not like a deed restriction can be used instead of having it being held by a conservation management um, corporation or entity. So that's just a quick rundown of why that was there. It's just an example of a draft that could be used.
So is there, is there, is there is, what about the deed text for the right of way? Is that that that's not provided so far with the application, right?
Um, the deed itself was provided with the application.
And that, but that includes the right of way?
Uh,
I mean, the right of way must be, must be memorialized at the registered deeds, right?
Well, it's just an access right away. It's not um.
But it sounds like it's a right of way in concept, not in actual uh, location. Is that correct?
From what we've looked into and from our surveyor's point of view, oh, Dan Mordo's point of view is that it's just the concept right away. Saying that there's access across the property, and it's not a defined access.
Yeah, I I've heard that that Coles puts these things on many of the of of the pieces of land that it sells. And um, they're 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 not, they're not plotted out. You don't know where they are. Um, and and probably it's because a lot of them are never used. Um, you know, the trouble of surveying them and laying them out doesn't justify uh, you know, the slim chance that it would ever be used. But they put these kind of general uh, types of things on there, so that at some point, if they choose to exercise the access, then it could be um, worked out where that'll be.
But but doesn't this, I mean, I mean, suppose this, suppose this, uh, suppose this were, suppose the um, this plan were approved. Um, wouldn't. Wouldn't wouldn't there have to be documentation for a for a prospective buyer that would acknowledge this right of way? I mean, how how would the?
Well, it's not coming out of the deed.
Right.
It's it's going to remain in the deed and probably any self respecting. Attorney for the buyer would would see it and explain that.
But it's not but it's not it's not written in the deed accompanying the application. That's what I'm that's all I'm really saying. Oh, is it? Isn't it? It said track is conveyed subject to the right of uh subject to the right of way of one brown. If any such right exists. Is that it? It's on the if you open up the deed out of that uh application documents, it's on the second page underneath the. Um, in between uh the first tract and the second tract. Right, yeah, that's it right there. Is that it? Is that what we're talking about here?
If 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 there's a right of access, it's gonna be in the deed or else it doesn't exist.
Well, yeah, that's so excited. But yeah, what? I think that's it. I mean, but. I think there was some confusion as to whether or not it was in the deed or not. But anyway, yeah, that's that seems to be it. It is pretty vague to give that.
I'm not sure who Kiefer is, but it is a question or clarification. I don't think if you want to recognize that or not.
Hold hold on before we start. Before we start any of this stuff, usually after the applicant presents, then the board has an opportunity to question the applicant before the general public can speak.
Yeah, that's fine, Jeff. I thought maybe he it was something that was clarifying. I didn't know who it was, so I just wanted to make sure we didn't blow by if it was part of the discussion, but I agree with you.
Who is Kiefer? Is Kiefer part of the applicant um the the applicant team or? Or 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 are you for the general public?
I I'm just a a neighbor on general public.
Okay, I it meaning meaning no disrespect. It's just I I just wanna do this in the proper order.
Yeah, that's that's totally fine. That's you guys continue.
So so, Mr. Chairman, are 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 we ready to have board questions?
I don't see why not. I think that's good.
Okay. I I have a few to get us going, I guess. That's all right. So so these are all coming to Mark. So who 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 does um? Who does Mark White men envision owning the open space?
He. He was thinking about keeping and building his house on the property, so. Um, he was thinking that he would keep and hold on to the open space as a deed restriction of some sort.
Okay, so it would go with the house.
Yes. If the board allows that, otherwise he would have to either petition the town. To take it as a conservation restriction or another restriction agency.
We can't tell you um who who must own the open space. That's up to the applicant.
Well, I thought I read on the um bylaw that. The planning board can determine whether or not they want to allow it to. Be conveyed via like. If it needed to be in an organization's hands that meets the. Um, conservation requirements set forth by the state or if it could be. Stay within the owner like private ownership.
Yeah, well, we have a lot to do with it if it's a homeowners association because we want to make sure that. Homeowners Association works and it's set up correctly, but if it's um. It doesn't have to be a homeowners association. If that's the discretion of the applicant, so if if it's just gonna go with the house, that that's fairly simple.
Okay.
So. I I heard you say before you're thinking of 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 proposing. That it not be a conservation restriction, that it be some. Um, other form, other sort of lesser form of 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 protection. Uh, a conservation easement or um or a zoning restriction or what? What are you proposing?
It would probably I would probably suggest Mark to have it in a conservation easement. On the property, but to be set forth on the deed.
So so an easement rather than a restriction. Okay, because yeah, all right, all right.
Doesn't the bylaw require it be a restriction?
It it does, but. But it allows them to propose other forms as well. And it we get to decide. Whether those other forms are acceptable.
Okay.
So so the house type is single family dwelling?
Yes.
And the driveway a- and that's gonna be on one building lot?
Correct.
That's.
Building lot, single family. Dwelling.
Okay. And so so a- and it's gonna be a a individual driveway, not a shared driveway.
Yep, just an individual, single family driveway. That's only the single family lot.
Okay, so so that given your calculation sheet, that means that you could do. Um, a duplex. You could do a single family dwelling. Or you could do a single family dwelling with an accessory apartment, either attached or detached. Do you understand those are all your options? Okay, so that doesn't necessarily have to be determined now, but um. But but those that's what's available to you. Um, given that it's not a shared driveway, you're not seeking a shared driveway permit right now, then. Um, two units is um two separate units is not possible. But two single family dwellings. You could do a duplex, but you couldn't do two separate single family dwellings.
No, um, Mr. White man just wanted the single family, the one residential building. Um, whether or not it's a duplex or the single family with the accessory building. Um, he was leaving that up to whoever bought the property.
Okay.
But his intention, if he bought the if he purchased the property, would just be a single family residence. But if he kept the property, I should say, he already purchased it. He owns it. Um, but yes, if he keeps the property, he was just gonna build his a single family house.
But you could sell it to a third party and they could come in and propose a duplex.
Correct.
Okay.
They would only be able to propose whatever is allowed after the if the special permit is granted. For the open spaces on.
But but this special permit is. Um, based on a single family dwelling from what my reading of the different documents that you submitted are.
Well, Steve, they they get what the numbers say they get. They can elect to do less and a single family dwelling would be less than a duplex.
Right.
Um, but that's their choice.
But I guess I guess what I'm saying is that from the documentation that um. Uh, was submitted, it clearly says single family dwelling. What you're saying is that doesn't commit. If this property is sold to a third party, that doesn't commit them to a single family dwelling.
I unless we find some reason to condition it to be a single family dwelling only.
Well, Jeff, can I ask your question just to follow up?
I'm 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 yeah, I'm 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 not sure that's a valid condition, but.
So I mean, it seems like. By submitting paperwork for a special permit. Specifying a single family residence that the applicant already has made a decision, then the the planning board is then being. Given the choice of saying, here's what we're asking for. Make a decision about it as opposed to we make a decision and they get to change their mind. Like, I get you're 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 saying at the very beginning of the process, they have a choice. But it seems like they made a choice and they're asking us to make a decision based upon that choice.
Thank you, Michael. That's essentially where I was going.
Two two great minds.
Yep, I. I think it may be up to the applicant to um. To either um. Self limit or not.
I guess my question is the fact that it's stated in the application. As a single family dwelling, is isn't that a commitment or is that just a? Doesn't hold any water.
Well, I I mean, does that mean that they they can't do an accessory apartment future at some point? Like most other houses in town can?
No, no, I'm not asking that, but if they change it, you know, it says to me that there's no intention of putting a duplex in, for example.
Yeah, cuz it's the primary residence that's being asked for.
Or a second single family homes homesite, which they can't do if under this particular special permit, the way it's it's set up.
I I guess just my sense would be that I wouldn't want to make a decision on a special permit unless we clarified it. Um, or we, you know, we write the special permit with the condition that it's said, based on what was presented, this is how we're deciding, but. It it seems a little loosey goosey to sort of make a decision. Given their documentation and then have it be done somewhat differently.
Robert here, uh, I'm just wondering. Uh, given Jeff's comments. Uh, whether or not uh the planning board might encourage applicants in this situation. Keep it open ended or rather than to unnecessarily narrow themselves.
Yeah, I. I mean, I I I think it's kind of. Our job to make sure an applicant understands what their options are. And. Yeah, I I I don't have a a solid opinion. If if they say single family dwelling and then they later change their mind. I don't know. I think Mark should go to talk to his client about it.
Wouldn't if we per if the board permitted it as a single family dwelling. Wouldn't whoever purchases it sit down the line, just go back to the board to do. To uh revise the permit? So revise isn't the correct term. I'm blanking on the amend. That's the word amend the permit. To be allowed to do a duplex or the accessory building.
It it might have to be a new special permit as opposed to an amendment if it's. Just given what we've had to do before.
I what I don't understand is if we accept this, then it's accepted as a single family dwelling. I don't know what the problem with that is.
Yeah.
Why are we comp? I guess why I'm asking is why are we complicating it and expanding it when the applicant has clearly said this is a single family dwelling? Okay, in suppose the suppose this suppose we permitted as a single family dwelling only. The property got sold, would a would a would a buyer be able to come back and um? And. And ask for a new open space design plan that would allow a duplex?
Yeah, I I I think they could amend it and and do that.
Yeah, I like. But I don't I you know, when we uh. We're just talking about the the battery at Wheelock. When they came back, they had to do a special, a separate special permit cuz it was substantially. Different. I think it was a differential. So it might be I I'd have to look at the language, but it might be that they have to do it rather than an amendment of an existing special permit. It might have to be a a new one. Um, you know, the the other way to do it is if the applicant wants to sort of. Come back with, you know, and change the language of what's getting submitted to say single family or. Um, a duplex, then we could be approving something in front of us that has that option as opposed to what I think Steve is saying. Which I agree with, it's just really getting one option presented to us. It seems like that's the stated preference of the applicant.
May I ask how a duplex, when it is. Allowed is a substantial change to an open space design that's still going to be a one developable. Developable lot, open spaces on. You're going from a single family house to a duplex. It's not creating a separate second lot.
Yeah, I I don't know for sure. I'd have to look at what what made us require a separate special permit the second time. I'm just sort of recalling from the from memory on something. So you, Mark, you could be correct. It might not be substantial enough because it's only one building. So I'd have I'd have have we'd have to look, I think.
I I hmm. I I just think we should be upfront with the applicant as 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 to what they can do and. If if we go memorialize single family dwelling in here and then, you know, it um they they later decide that they want to do a. Duplex, um, you know, all the numbers say they can do a duplex. Um, and we've got to go through a an entire special permit again with hearing and everything else. Um, you know, for 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 what could have been accomplished in the beginning, which is. Simply to have the permit state what the limits are of what they can do and then they decide. What they're gonna do in future.
Well, I think, Jeff, that's not unreasonable, but we're not getting that request from the applicant. It's in writing that.
Mr. Lemon is just proposing a single family residence.
Okay, I I just don't want to make endless work for this board, which. Anyway. Over o- over things that that really are um unnecessary because the numbers say they can have a duplex if they wish. All right, let me let me move on.
Can I? I'm sorry, I you know, just. You know, like, you know, so they build a single family house and then, you know, someone comes down, you know, an accessory apartment uh is. You know, site plan review right by the by the zoning board. But that wouldn't apply on this because it's a open space designer. It's not like a normal buildable lot with road frontage and everything like that. So therefore, it's tied to whatever the conditions are of the permit we.
No, I know. I I believe it still goes. It still goes the same way as long as the lot has uh forty five thousand square feet. The Z B A can uh can uh do a site plan review for a accessory apartment. Yeah, this is just like just like any other single family dwelling in town. Yeah, the only the only criteria is that it have forty five thousand square feet, which it does. So.
Well, where where does like the road frontage uh requirement come in? Only for a uh primary use, uh, single uh dwelling?
It 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 doesn't. The the road frontage issue has been taken away by virtue of this permit. So. There's no road frontage requirement anymore and and that doesn't even exist for accessory apartments either.
Okay.
Many of the accessory apartment lots uh don't have the required frontage, but they need to have that that forty five thousand square feet of area, which is. Four bedrooms worth.
Yeah, I mean, I I I would suggest we see, you know, what are the testimony we received from the public and uh.
Yeah, well, I'm 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 trying to get down here so we can hear from some public.
Keep going.
Okay, um, so. The 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 driveway is gonna go down that narrow pole from the road. Um, how wide is that?
The. Access or the driveway itself?
The 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 um the the access.
The access is approximately forty eight to forty nine feet wide.
All right.
The driveway is proposed twelve foot wide gravel drive. And propose is the driveway goes down the center of that access. Which will provide nineteen feet on one side and eighteen feet on the other side.
Okay, so you're. Okay, so you're gonna meet the fifteen foot required setback from property line.
Yes, with this proposed design.
Okay. All right, good. So you won't have to you won't have to seek a variance fr- from the. All right, uh, good, so you won't have to, you won't have to seek a variance fr- from the zoning board. Um, the other issue is um. If you put in a twelve foot driveway, which is what our bylaw says. Um, that's probably gonna be. Mean taking out trees and cutting into the rock walls that are on both sides?
Correct, I believe. Um. Mark wanted to apply for the variance after he got approval for. This, the buildable lot and the open space design. Um, to shift the alignment of the driveway to utilize the existing. Wood access road. But he wanted to make sure that he had approval of the open space design first before he went for that variance prior to building.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure that you knew that a variance would be required, but that would be from from the other board, the zoning board. All right, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Yeah, so I just have one follow up to the question about uh. Changes, so. In section nine point four dash three, which is about amendment to special permits. What it says is pretty straightforward. The terms and conditions of any special permit or site plan approval. May be amended in the same manner as required for the issuance of the original approval. And so that would mean that if it's in any way amended, you'd have to go through the same process again. Um, any enlargement alteration in construction of accessory structures not previously approved shall require an amendment. So in both instances, uh. You would need to do a special permit, it seems like definitely if you were to go from single family to um. A multi-family, single, you you know, a single building.
So I would, I would encourage you to think carefully about what you want or might want or what some future buyer might want.
I'll pass that along to Mark, but as far as I know and discussed with him, he wants to. Have it as a single family lot. And if a potential buyer wants to do a duplex, it would be. On that to amend the permit or get another special permit.
Does the board have more questions?
Um, Miriam's not here, right? I was just gonna see if since we had.
Here.
Cool, yeah, if we had question, we had questions last time it came up about. The wetlands and that stuff, I was wondering if you if there is, if we wanted to sort of extend the courtesy of the. Concom as part of the board, if if there is questions related to that, cuz it seems like that was came up pre- previously.
Yeah, I think my recollection that was that we talked about um. That there was sufficient building um landscape um outside the buffer zone. Um, and that um they were looking to grant a C R to another entity, maybe the conservation commission.
Okay.
Process hasn't started, we haven't been approached.
Okay. Thanks.
Um, as I stated earlier, Mister White man has began to. Think about just keeping the open space cut restriction area. Deeded to the property as a restricted easement or like a conservation easement or uh open space. Isment. Instead of having an outside entity control the. Um, conservation restriction area.
Okay. And it sounds just, Mark, just to clarify what you had said is, you know. Given the fact that, you know, the where the easement to the coal's land is not defined in the deed. That the practical resolution would be that they could use the driveway going back and then continue through if that was, is that what the idea was?
That's what the idea is, um. As for practicality and what would actually come about it, um. I that would be up to. The owner of the property going forward, um. At this point, since there's no other access to the property, but through the property, they would have to. The there's deeded access through the forty nine foot. Frontage along other road. So it would have to be through the driveway.
Okay.
Unless Coles gave up the. Right to access through the property.
Okay, I'm just thinking about in terms of impact of a butters and it doesn't look like there's any other way to get back in there like you just said, so that's helpful to me.
Yeah, so either way, even if. They, no matter what, at this point, Coles would have to use. The existing woods road. To get back and across the property.
And.
Which would be affecting the butters anyways.
And and Cole still owns that land directly to the rear.
Correct. Coles and then the. Um, Timothy Hunting, but I. Maybe Coles purchased Hunting's land, I'm not sure. I don't know.
So. Are we ready to uh? Take comment questions from the public?
Yeah.
Good, good, so um. Kiefer was interested in speaking earlier.
Yeah, I'd uh, I have a few few questions about this, um. So I live in ninety seven Leverett Road, the uh to the east of this proposed driveway. Um, I was wondering if potentially you could zoom in like kind of close to my house and my neighbor's house in the. In the proposed uh entrance of the driveway, just to get a closer look at that. Perfect. Yeah, so from what I was reading, it looks like there's a, it's like forty seven feet wide going all the way. Back until it like kind of opens up, is that correct?
It's between forty seven and a half to like forty nine, I believe.
Okay, so and what I was also reading is that there's gonna be about forty feet wide of destruction, right?
Um, the proposed currently would be that, um. Mister White man is proposed or planning on. Proposing a zoning variance for the driveway to align the driveway on the existing woods road, which would. Greatly reduce the amount of disturbance through the area.
So if I'm looking at these dotted lines correct, it looks like that line is like. Three feet away from my house and it actually will go into my neighbor's. House, like they have a fence up there and everything, so will they have to take that down? I mean, that's gonna be four feet away from my chimney, I'm just. Concerned about the amount of destruction that will go through there and any damage it'll cause. Um, we've spent thousands repairing our basement uh for it flooding, putting in some pumps, getting it completely redone. I'm just very concerned that this will affect the water level getting into the basement, um. And I mean, I have more concerns, but maybe you can speak about about that.
This shouldn't. Theoretically, based on groundwater and the grade of the site, this is downstream. From your property, so. It shouldn't have an effect on the groundwater on your basement, it shouldn't increase the groundwater flow to your basement. Um.
So with that being said, I was reading that the proposed driveway, the the drainage is gonna be on the east side, which is. Also right next to my house. Um, so that's also another concerning factor right there, that that's maybe five, ten feet away from from my house.
I mean, well.
I I don't know, yeah, it's just something that we're we're concerned about.
Mister White man's proposing of planning on going to the zoning board for a variance to shift this whole driveway. Over to the existing access road.
Okay.
Be showing this as proposed based on the requirements of the zoning by law.
Okay, um, and then another concern I have is closer towards the entrance of the driveway, um. Our well is right in that corner, pretty much ten feet from that property line, um. Again, we're concerned that any sort of construction there could damage our well, it's just. It's just so close to to our property, um, as well as I I'm concerned about the. The size of the driveway, I mean, I know with um. This special permit, you don't need a road frontage, um, there's no like regulation on that, um. However, it if you're turning right out of that driveway to go west down the hill. It it would be incredibly hard to look at, it's gonna be as blind, if not more blind than my driveway and with the hundreds of cars that go down, it's just. Another concern to think about and um if I know there was a big conversation about a possible duplex. If there's four cars back there, that's just gonna be. A lot of traffic on that small common way.
Hey, can I ask why the road is forty seven to forty nine, forty seven and a half to forty nine feet wide? The clearance around the road, I guess.
The clearance is that because you have the grading that's gonna be required to have the road go through the center of. The um access point. Um. That land is probably two to three feet higher than the existing. Would access road and then to so you don't have stormwater flowing directly into the western abattoir. Um, we're proposing the square on the eastern side, this is just. An aerial picture, um.
That that was helpful actually, Mark, to look at, we want to go back to it. Thank you.
Um, so we propose to have the um because it's a cut condition on the eastern side.
Can you?
What?
Can can you zoom zoom in on that?
It's kind of hard to see, on this line here. Is the grading disturbance line. And clearing limit, um, the reason why the. Um, swears on the eastern side of the driveway is because it's in a key uh cut condition. You're not gonna create a swear in a fill condition, it's just more work and it would take up a lot more space. Um. We. Um, then the other reason why it's the um disturbance areas like forty feet wide is. Because we have to grade down to the existing grade on the western side, which is three, two feet high, like three to four feet higher. Than the center line of the forty seven and a half foot access keyway. Um, again, all of that, if Mister White man goes through and. Applies for the zoning variance, that is proposed driveway shifts over to the access road and the disturbances. Um, get greatly reduced.
Can you, where, i- if you have, if you use the same image and you zoom out just for a moment, can you just? Show where instead the access road would be going?
Um. One second, I can. Do better than that, maybe.
Is this, it's very helpful to have the actual buildings there. For comparison.
So if I go to the sheet. And zoom out. This is this is Kiefer's house.
Okay.
The.
Where where's Leverett Road?
Leverett Road is right here.
Uh, well, I'm not seeing where the there is, let's see. Okay, there we go, got it, okay.
So the existing. Um, situation currently is. The probably the first. Hundred and fifty feet is all grass and then it turns into a wood access road. Um, that would access road is two to three feet off of the Lego's property line. Um, it travels all the way back close to. The western property line and then cuts through. The middle of the property kind of it veers off and then goes through the wetlands. Um. As we wanted to show proposed design that meets all the zoning requirements, we split this. And as you can see. There's quite a large grading difference between this upper part and the existing access road. That is why there's so much fill on the western side. The eastern side, as I was saying, is a cut condition, so that's the side that we put the proposed swell on.
So I guess I have two two sort of. Um, observations based on, you know, what Kiefer were saying and I'd be interested, you know, with the board thinks, but. You know. The idea behind open space is to allow development, but also to ensure that open space is preserved and or, you know. Created in somehow in some manner, um. What we have here is a one-house development, you know, so there's open space that's conserved in the back. But there's already open space and we're only adding one dwelling. And yet, for two sets of neighbors, we're basically creating a huge impingement on their existing properties, so. We're cramming two people in who currently live there. By driving, you know, putting a driveway through their residences, pretty much up to their foundations. Um, and we're not getting. Any savings cuz it's one house on one lot, it's not like someone's proposing ten buildings and we're carving out a big open space to prevent, um. You know, carving up of things, so that that strikes me as sort of antithetical to the goal of open space, um. One party's benefiting, the other people getting less open space, so I think philosophically, that's something interesting. And then I guess the question I would have, maybe Jeff for Jeff. Um. The frontage, which maybe, Mark, you can just confirm, is if it was just a straight A and R and it wasn't an open space. What's the alternative? Like, can what can be built if we said we didn't want to do an open space and we just said do an A and R?
The only, the only way to do that would be to go to the zoning board of appeals and get a variance for the amount of frontage necessary. Uh, which would be a very difficult.
Right, so it so am I correct in saying that just on the face of it? The applicant can't build a building there unless he gets an open space. And if we give and we've forgiven the open space, basically we're allowing the applicant to build a house. And get the benefits of building it on land in the back, but we're um impinging upon two existing residents and making them less open space, is that a correct assessment? If one sees it that way?
No, you're not taking any open space away from the.
Well. Well, you're getting, putting a driver where there wasn't one.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, it 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 smushes their reality and it maybe creates impingement on whether it's. I mean, the fact that there's runoff on eastern side which goes into Kiefer's, you know, house, that's that's where the runoff is, so it. It creates impingement where there wasn't one, is that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it'll it'll create a driveway that's actively used by by a house instead of a woods road that's fairly used.
Right, for for a site that doesn't, that requires, that can't be done by A and R.
Correct. Hmm, yeah, that was the, that was the the same situation with the Olszewski project that we did. And to some extent, it was um also true of the Chuck Damari project.
Um, Robert, uh, I I guess the issue coming up for me is. The question of impingement. Uh, whether or not there is impingement. Uh, and and to what extent that makes a difference and do we require of the applicant? To submit some type of uh expert information that uh impingement is not going to take place.
Well. All right, we're sort of getting into deliberations a little bit here. Um, which we shouldn't do too much of while the hearing is open, um.
Well, I think it's for. Well, I think it's for, but if we don't ask the questions, we can't make sure that we're gathering the information.
But but are we asking anybody any questions?
Well, I was asking you just for clarification, but I mean, Mark can jump in if if he has other information, but it it I think to. To to Robert's point. Aside from assurances that it won't make a difference from Mark, if you guys sought out any. You know, experts that would say that the the drainage on either east or west side of the driveway with putting in gravel and creating. Swells and cutting down trees will not impact. Um into people's properties.
The swell will actually take water away from his basement area and convey it further north. To be discharged deeper into the property before it can infiltrate the ground. Um as for the well, it being ten feet off the. Property line, we're not digging foundations. In the front of the house, we're digging down maybe two, three feet. It's not deep rocky or. From what I saw in the soil report, it's not deep and rocky material. It's quite. Nice material. So I'm not expecting large vibrations or anything like that that will hamper affect the well.
If if I could just speak on that, I mean, there's a whole house being constructed. So there, you know, there's gonna be a lot of. Lot of machines going down and it it's just very concerning that all that. Will be that close to the well, you know what I mean? I mean, if there's an accident or something, it's just so close that. You know, you can't predict what could happen. It's just, you know, is it worth the risk being that close to it?
So I have a my question for Jeff and the rest of the planning board is, we don't have to get into the specifics, but. Could could this be conditioned when we get to the point of deliberation?
Yes. Okay, yeah, that's one of the things we're deliberate, we're gonna be deliberate stating on is. You know, whether it should be approved and if so, what kind of condition?
Okay.
Uh I I I want to ask the applicant or Mark. Does does the existing driveway alignment that's there now, does it erode?
From a site visit, it did not look like it erodes very much, if at all.
Okay. So it it sounds like, it sounds like. Am I correct that in order to stay away from the side property lines? Uh you know, on the um. The east and the west, to to get the driveway centered in the right away. You're going to have to deviate from the existing. Travel way.
Correct. Um what is shown on the plans is a proposed driveway to meet the zoning bylaw. With the fifteen-foot setbacks off of abutting property lines.
Okay.
Ideally, you would utilize the existing alignment, but that's like I previously stated, it's. Like three feet off of an abutting property line. Which would require the zoning variance, but.
Okay.
Whitman wanted to get this approved before he went before the zoning board for that variance.
Okay, so. Centering that driveway is what's going to necessitate the um. Removal of rock walls, the cutting of trees and all of the drainage work.
Correct.
Okay. The what's your opinion about using the existing alignment, even even if it doesn't meet the zoning? Um requirements for setbacks and property lines using the existing alignment? And um hardening it a little bit, reinforcing it a little bit, so it can it can take. The traffic from a single-family dwelling and hold up.
Um we actually. Mr. Whitman. Um had me prepare the application for a zoning variance and. It should um from what I was able to to design and. It minimizes the impacts to the area to the um existing stone walls and the tree line. It minimizes the amount of trees that would need to be cut down. There'll have to be pruning of trees that are existing. From when we were out there walking, there was a lot of low-hanging branches over the drive of the access road. So those would have to be um trimmed back, but it'd be a lot less disturbance than. Meeting the zoning bylaws with the driveway.
So it it sounds like. Meeting the setback requirement for the zoning is really what's gonna bring on a lot of this disturbance.
Correct.
Okay.
Mark, can I ask you a follow-on question? How how would you describe the existing? Travel way. So it's, uh you know, is it totally cleared and grassy? Is it, you know, are there trees in the middle of it or just on the side? Or their roots? I mean, how would you describe what it currently is?
Um the first, like, I'd say. Couple hundred feet of it's pretty grassy. Um then it turns into a. Eight foot approximately eight foot wide dirt access road um with trees on the side. Um there's the one tree, one large tree. But two twin maple trees and the start that kind of split the access, but other than that. There's um just trees along the edge of it.
So where it turns into the dirt, can you just put your cursor there to get a sense of where the grass ends?
Here, once it enters the woods or the tree line. A dirt road.
So so just to sort of clarify what you were explaining to Jeff. From Levert Road a hundred feet back, it's mostly grass. So it's with the exception of that one tree. It's. Pretty cleared already. Um you know, it's only grass. There's not a lot of stuff in the way. Uh and then it turns somewhere around where Kiefer's houses turns into the woods road, which is dirt.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
From my, from remembering when we were out there at the site visit.
So I have I have a process question. I mean, maybe I misunderstand, but it sounds like Mark Whitman. Wants to go for the variance from the ZBA after this is approved. I mean, wh- what would?
He wants to make sure that he has the buildable lot before going through the zoning board. Of variance.
But I mean, we but the. But the driver, I mean, our approval is. Really includes the driveway as part of the special permit process. I mean, so that. We would be approving and we would be approving a design that he intends to have changed.
Well, done. The the question that that comes up for me, and again, this is kind of um on the deliberation side is. Um whether or not we could condition this special permit. Um to the applicant obtaining a variant. Prior to constructing the driveway. And that would be.
But right, but I mean, but the design that we're being shown now is not the design that is ultimately be desired.
From being on that site, no, I think I think the design that's being shown now would rip the whole place up and.
No, I guess, no, I'm saying that.
Fly with our zoning bylaw and it would it would. It would create a lot of drainage um and aesthetic issues.
No, I'm not disagreeing with that at all. I'm just saying that that. The driveway design that's being put before us now is not apparently the one. That is really desired in the end.
Yeah.
And. Yeah, Dagan, you're suggesting the process is backward, that the variant should be sought and then the design that's desired. I'm really asking question because it seems like, I mean. We're being asked to, we're we're being shown something and asked to approve something. That a variance is going to be applied for. I mean, it just seems a little odd. I mean, do we do we condition this on the on on a new on a new driveway design being being put forward? I, you know, I, one answer I would give to that is it might require asking Donna because I always remember Donna saying one commission. One board can't require something of another board and all this is not a direct request. It's sort of a sideways request.
Yeah, that's that's certainly true with subdivision control. You can't, you can't throw up another permit in front of subdivision. Um is a case on that. Um whether you can throw up another permit in front of a special permit, not sure. Great question. I I I I think if 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 we were to go to our Massachusetts zoning guidebook, we might. We might get some enlightenment, but I I don't know the answer right now.
Yeah, I guess I guess a question mark for you is what I'm what I'm hearing is. If you would be interested in considering talking to Mark about the sequencing of this. You know, and whether it would make sense to to. Oh, what's what's it's not postponing whatever whatever that is to sort of keep this hearing on hold while you go forward and seek out a variance. And then if you get the variance to what you're desiring. Come back with a revised drawing. Um so that that might be a worthwhile conversation with. With Whitman.
Yeah, to continue the hearing.
That's the word. Thank you. And should. I mean, I didn't invite Donna to this meeting. I mean, it seems like we we may need her before this is done. Could be. Mark, Donna's our town council.
I guess. Yeah. Think I knew that. Many people. Uh I guess we can continue the meeting then, so I can discuss this with Mark. Um I wouldn't, I'd rather have the board not take a vote. Before I discuss with the client, the options that have been. Proposed by the board and. It seems that the board's leaning one way and if the driveway variance, swear that and. I'd rather hold off on. And continue the meeting.
So so um we we probably need a a formal. Verbal, at least, request from you to um allow for the hearing to be continued so that you can go back and. Consult with your with your client. And probably need to continue it to a date certain, but you need to request it and then we need to vote on it.
Um I'm requesting that the meeting be continued to the next public hearing.
Um I was wondering if I could just ask one more question and if you want me to hold it till next meeting, that's that's fine.
Well, please speak now.
Okay, um so is Mark holding on to any of that land afterwards? Like, once it's all built and all said and done?
From my discussion with him is he was debating on. Um keeping the land himself and building his home on it. Um and then if that was the case, he was going to. Hold on to the conservation restriction as well and just put it as a deed restriction on the property. Um stating that it's open space and cannot be built on.
Okay, so I guess where my concern is is what's what's stopping this from becoming, you know, like a whole neighborhood back there? Like, is there? Okay, so it would be possible if in the future down the road, this gets approved, they get a driveway in here, that eventually there could be more. Houses if, say, he buys um adjacent properties. Could a whole neighborhood be put back there? Then all of a sudden, they all have to. Access their houses through this tiny driveway connecting to Lever Road. I I just, that's just a concern. I don't know if that's even possible, but I'm that's. It's kind of where my head's going. X, I know he he built that whole Sugarloaf plot. So I just don't want that to happen to Chutes Berry, um just because I love how it is and I would hate to see those woods gone.
Yes, I mean, the. Commission would be, or the planning board would be able to answer this question better than me, but. Um from my understanding is, once this permit is. Approved, if it is approved, then he can only have the one developable lot on the property.
Kiefer, this is, this is not a shared driveway. It can only, so you can't put additional units beyond. The one or possibly a duplex, as Jeff was saying, there can't be a development back there because this is not. Being approved as as a shared driveway.
Okay, thank you.
So, huh, but let's let's play this out further based on what he said. Uh there was a conveyance of. Of property from WD Kohl's. Uh to uh wherever the owner is of this property, they could conceivably come before a planning board and. Request a special permit for a a shared driveway.
There's no, oh, in my opinion, there's no possible way that. In access through the property for a shared driveway to the Coles property would get permitted through Concom. Um there's too much disturbance to wetlands.
Oh, yeah, that's a that's a separate question, but yeah.
Um it would be detriment, it would. You'd be over the limit of what the disturbance, in my opinion.
Well, it it would also exceed the limits that are in our bylaw.
For driveway length.
Yes.
For the number of, for the number of of dwelling units that could be back there. So, you know, you you you're 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 hemmed in by by that limit. And then you have conservation land, conservation easement land that that surrounds that building envelope, that. Three point nine seven acre building envelope. And you 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 can't, you can't. Get through that conservation land. You can't put a road through it driveway. You can't extend it back onto calls. Really, all all you can do is is um work with that three point nine seven acres.
Right, um. So even so there, they could file for an NOI though and and get that re-delineated as it was done for this property though in the future, correct?
Um again, the. Mass well and protection only allows you to disturb a certain amount of wetlands. Um and to access back there, you would cross that amount. Without having to do substantial mediation remediation and other work that would just make it not viable. On top of, it would be, you'd have to put up, if you wanted to put a development like Whitman's. Um Sugarloaf condominium project, you would have to change the driveway out to an actual road. And that'd be, again, unfeasible, like.
Yeah.
Not worth the money.
Gotcha. Okay, um just one last quick question from from my mother. She's just gonna. Gonna pin it over.
Um I have a question about the wetlands. Is this something that can change in future years if there's more and more of a drought? Can that um property back there be redelineated into less and less protected land? Depending on what's going on with the climate. Thank you.
Um that would be a question.
Could I, could I respond to that?
Please.
Um so. The Conservation Commission reviewed a wetland delineation for this property. I think it was last year. Um in twenty twenty-one, and we approved the wetland delineation map. That map is only good for three years. Um if the applicant was to develop the property after that. Order that delineation expires, then they would have to come back to the Conservation Commission and get it re-delineated.
But it would be possible for more and more lots to go in if the wetlands were to sort of say dry up.
Well. I would say yes and no because it takes more than three years for wetlands to just dry up. Because even if the plants are stressed, uh the soils will still have wetland characteristics for several years. So. uh, the soils will still have wetland characteristics for several years. So it, it's not going to happen suddenly or dramatically. It would be a very slow process.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, ma'am, I, I, I don't think it's the wetlands that are, are limiting development on this parcel as much as it is Article Five of our zoning bylaw, which specifies how many units of housing can go on a piece of land that size. And um, I, and once this project, if it's approved and that almost all those wetlands are, are, uh, become conservation land, they can't thereafter be developed uh, as a part of any future proposal.
That's excellent. I, I am kind of concerned about the possibility of a duplex though, because that doubles the amount of cars and the amount of families out back and seeing as they will be driving right past my chimney. Uh, come winter, come spring, come mud season, that could be kind of a problem for us. So I'm just a little concerned about the open-endedness of them being able to build a duplex.
Well, it sounds like they're limiting themselves to a single family dwelling. And if, if that stays in the application, then um, I believe this board will memorialize that in the, in the permit.
So, so getting, getting back to things, I will move to accept the applicant's request for a continuance of this hearing.
All right, to a, to a date certain, what do we have? Next meeting, February thirteenth?
That's the second Monday of February.
Yeah. Yep, okay, sure.
Is February thirteen good with you, Mark?
So, so Carrie, it's very important that you note that um, that, that Mark has, has requested this. And, and it's acceptable to him.
Okay, I have that written.
Who seconded it?
I'll, I'll second it, or whoever.
Yeah, whatever. Okay, so um, um, any more discussion before I call the roll? Okay, um, Jeff? Nathan?
Oh, which one?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, Jeff Lacy.
Hi.
Uh, Nathan?
Hi.
Oh, I'm having trouble. Robert?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Uh, I'm an I. Did I miss anybody?
The other Jeff.
The other Jeff.
Uh, Jeff Weston is an I.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. See you on the thirteenth.
Thank you all.
Jeff Weston, we start calling you OJ for other Jeff.
Okay.
Have it, if I can say, having taught in the public schools for um, thirty five years, I've been called a lot worse. Thank you.
So, I know we put off Miriam some earlier.
I am here. Sorry.
I know you wanted to talk about the Abdou thing.
Yeah, it's fine. I'm just sitting here doing Concom minutes, so I'm putting the time to good use. Um, yeah, I just, um, it looks like the planning board was asked for comment. And I wanted to clarify for the applicant, um, what the DP guidance was. And I don't know if this comes up very often, if the planning board even gets notified about Chapter ninety one licenses, but um, you did this.
First time.
It's interesting. Apparently the regulations do require, the state regulations do require that um, an invitation for comment is um, requested from planning boards. It follows the regulations.
This is for a doc?
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah.
This is for a doc.
It's for a doc.
Okay.
A doc that already exists, right?
It's a removable doc. It wasn't licensed. And um, the applicant is rebuilding his home. And when we reviewed the property, um, we determined that there wasn't a, a Chapter ninety one license, so we required that the applicant get one. Um, which he is doing. Um, but upon further investigation, I learned, and this was news for me, that not only does the state have to license a ninety one license, um, but the Concom has to issue a permit for it. So, go figure.
So, my, my only tongue-in-cheek comment is since it's lakefront, my only opinion is the doc should not block anyone's view.
Well, except for, it might block the view of the critters in the lake.
I'm just reflecting on my PTSD from last year's conversations.
Oh, welcome to my world.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's just what it is.
So, we're not required to comment, but we may.
Yes, that's the, that's the language they use.
What we've learned is that um, there are, we're often coming across docks and we don't go out looking for them, nor does DEP, but uh, when we encounter one because we're permitting a project, uh, we often discover that app, you know, landowners don't have licenses. Um, people just don't think about it. It hasn't been part of the culture and um, the licenses are good for like twenty or thirty years. So people sometimes sell a property and then they don't know, the new owners don't know if there's a license. Or there isn't a license because it changed hands.
You know, when I was working for DCR, we dealt with that stuff on, on lakefronts through our own permitting, our DCR permitting on water bodies, not, not Lake Wyolla, but like Lake Matawa and others that eventually drained into the Quavon. And at, at some point, I was told that that dock licensing um, program was just abandoned by, by DEP, that um, that, that they just weren't, that they, they weren't even doing it anymore. They weren't paying any attention or weren't doing it or.
They're doing it.
We tried to get them interested in it and they weren't.
Well, I, you know, what I think is they, they still do it. They don't go looking for it. They're, so they're not doing enforcement and I don't know how much, I don't think there's good coordination between the uh, the Wetland Division of DEP and the Chapter ninety one Waterways Division. So that's not like they're always uh, saying, hey, we got this notice of intent. Is there a dock license? So there isn't that kind of communication, but, but you know, we are apparently responsible for this and you know, it isn't just docks, it's any structure, temporary or permanent that you put in the lake. So even apparently buoys, um, we had an issue last year involving an irrigation system where somebody wanted to pump water out of the lake for irrigating their lawn. And um, you know, it was determined that that was going to need a Chapter ninety one license, so um, there are a lot of different ways this can come about.
I need a bigger Concom.
I did note that in the paperwork, Chutes Berry was identified as being in Hampden County.
Nice.
I noted that as well.
We escaped finally.
In, in spirit only.
So, I don't, um, I'm not sure if we want to do, I, I don't have an opinion on the, on what should be done here. Does, does the rest of the planning board? I mean, do we want to comment on this?
No.
Correct, no.
Good, good.
Wise move. All right, that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, so.
Miriam, do you happen to know whether the building inspector does anything on, on, on docks?
Building inspector does not. It's really fallen, I mean, ultimately it's just falling on the Conservation Commission. I'm not prepared to go out with my kayak and start hunting down docks on Lake Wyolla.
So there's no standards as to um, you know, uh, the construction, uh, how sturdy they have to be and if they're safe or anything else.
You don't need a building permit for them because they're removable. They're temporary structures. Um, so no, they don't go through the building permit. Um, and so I think ultimately probably ends up falling to us because if it collapsed, it would damage the bank of the lake. So then it would be our, our jurisdiction. So we, we need to make sure the docks. I don't know that I have good standards for that, but gonna have to figure that out.
Well, if we're, if we're done on this topic, which I think we are, um, let's move on to the uh, to the lighting bylaw, the mulk, the municipal vulnerability stuff.
I'll, I'll be really quick so that I keep my friends on the planning board. Um, so last, you know, usually around this time, we discuss what bylaws we want to do for the coming um, town meetings. But you know, we spent the fall doing something, so that was a little unusual, but I was thinking about it last month and the one thing that I think we wanted to pick up is the lighting bylaw. Um, if you all remember, um, we had a resident come forward and ask us to do one. We listened and said it's too short notice. Um, they ended up doing one, introducing it to town meeting that that then at the end got withdrawn to town meeting. Um, but part of that discussion and was built into the proposed bylaw, uh, proposed warrant article was that the planning board would take up a, a lighting bylaw. And I think at the time during our conversations, when we were considering this, we thought it'd be reasonable to do it. There was some conversation. I know um, whether, you know, Jeff had raised with Donna, whether it was a, a town bylaw or a planning board zoning bylaw. Um, that it sounded like for what Donna said can go either way. Um, but it seemed like we're in January, we should, if not, we, I don't think we're going to make a decision tonight, but we should maybe just put that on our radar and think about it for next month, but um, so that would.
I'll put it on the agenda. One thing I would say is that I, I think the idea that the building inspector would be interested in enforcing the lighting bylaw is a fantasy.
Well, I think, you know, it seemed like it's one of those, I mean, with the research I did last year, there's definitely lots of towns who have them. There's definitely towns who don't have them. Um, you know, I think the issues, you know, we sort of, we've articulated some values, you know, like with.
No, I'm just talking about, I'm just talking about whether it's a general bylaw or zoning.
Oh, oh, okay.
That's all. I mean, and I don't think the building inspector is going to be in the slightest bit interested in enforcing a lighting bylaw. Whether the building inspector being interested in enforcing whatever our zoning bylaw is.
Sometimes.
Yeah.
That's why they pay the big bucks.
So, but uh, I guess, yeah, so if it's a general ordinance, it could be enforced by the police. If it's a zoning bylaw, I mean, the building inspector would be. I just wouldn't want to count on the building inspector for this. I mean, I.
No, he's not coming out at night and looking at life.
Right. Although I do think, you know, one thing though is with our signed bylaw, we did, we did build in a role for the police. And so it's, you know, with that acknowledging what you're saying, Deacon, I think, you know, it should never have to come to that for enforcement. I think people sort of, it's more about how people are designing things and building things and what the decisions are if they're.
You know, no, not everyone reads. I'm just getting to whether it's general or zoning.
Okay, yeah. Okay, well, let's, let's, we can debate it next time if we put on the agenda. I just don't want it to like fall off our radar and then we sprint if we decide we want to do it. That's, that was basically my thinking. Um, and then the other.
I, I don't feel overly enthusiastic about pursuing it per se.
You want to jump into the conversation now? You can make it a short conversation next month. I just wanted to put it on our radar is all.
So, so, yeah, it's just, all right, that's, yeah, we're not talking about anymore.
Yeah. And that, and then the other, the other part, I just, it's, it's more due diligence. You know, Miriam and I are both on the Energy and Climate Action Committee and we've been reviewing um, the recommendations that came from the municipal vulnerability plan for the town a few years ago. And there's also the hazard mitigation plan. And both of those speak to um, basically doing a regulatory review process um, regarding issues around stormwater, impervious cover um, and stormwater uh, management issues. And we don't really have, you know, we've got some stuff around driveways per se, but nothing specifically. Uh, in the context of stormwater and runoff and future development. Things like that. It seems like that's actually something we should be thinking about. Um, and again, I think just since it's almost nine o'clock, maybe we can put it off to next time, but I just wanted to frame the issue. Because I'm, you know, I don't know if Miriam, you wanted briefly mentioned it, but it, it seems like, well, I'll just say, the selectman had a meeting yesterday to consider a municipal vulnerability prepared to sprint. And the things that are, one of the things that are bubbling to the surface is stormwater in a variety of ways, whether it's culvert repair or how to do rain gardens, but you know, the concept of having too much water, if you look at California, um, that's the, the extreme with the extremes, but um, you know, we don't need to get that extreme to have real damage in terms of roadways and things like that. Um, and one thing that I've come to understand is the runoff of driveways, for example, onto the dirt roads is problematic. Um, so we, I think just having a conversation about is there a role for the planning board in this and what would it look like? Um, you know, without getting too regulatory, but being cognizant of, you know, what our goals might want to be in terms of, which, you know, development in the changing planet. I think that's sort of reorienting to think that way. Um, so that's, that's sort of the, the trailer, the trailer. That was it is right for a movie, the beginning. So. Miriam, did I say that right?
From on?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Okay.
What he said.
Okay.
Well, I'll put both of these on the agenda for next time.
Thanks, Deacon.
So, unanticipated business? It's great.
Oh, well, we have a special town meeting coming.
Oh, yeah. Oh, oh, thank you, Jeff. Yes.
I skipped that one.
That's our, that's our, our little baby there that we've been working on hatching, so. Um, it would be good if lots of planning board members were to come. Well, this is going to be an impersonal in the school.
Yes, it is. Starts at six o'clock, so it's not a Saturday. It's whatever night of the week it is, and then I, Thursday night, I think.
And Jeff, you know, the Pearson prod, project, the conservation area is on the special town meeting warrant.
Don't, don't go there yet. I'm still, so. I just want to reiterate what Jeff said, having, being the, the lone planning board member to sort of deal with the prior iteration this summer. Um, it's, I think Jeff and I will be there speaking to this, but even if others don't speak, just having backup is really helpful because I think the dynamic that I experienced last time, it was sort of like me representing the planning board versus people who had questions. And it became a more personalized thing as opposed to a board-supported initiative, um, which goes down differently. Um, having said that, I might just say, um, I'm not sure if I'll be there. My, my father-in-law is in his final weeks, so I'm not quite sure what that, you know, no one ever knows when that's going to happen, but um, I'll let you know if I won't be in town, but my full expectation is to be there. Probably side by side with Jeff representing this.
I'd like to say that I, I wasn't an official um, planning board member last time, but Michael did a fantastic job. Keeping his cool and dealing with all of the questions that came your way, Michael. So um, you represented um, the planning board extremely well and um, I was um, quite impressed. So thank you.
Sure. I wasn't feeling it inside, but I'm glad it came out that way.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Uh, I'll call the roll. Nathan?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
Uh, Jeff Weston?
Hi.
Jeff Lacy?
Hi.
I'm an I. Did I miss anybody?
Yeah, everybody.
All right, great.
Well, thank you all.
Night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.